That's sick to use my camel.
All right. Had to get all your attention. Lot of exciting things going on here. All right, so with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for the city council of Minnetrista, June 6th, 2022. First order of business is a reminder to please put your cell phones on airplane mode or silent so they don't disrupt the meeting. And then would you please join me for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington state, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you for joining us. Also, for those of you who will be watching on YouTube later on, I'll start out with some introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Pam Mortenson, John Chumpelin, Ann McGregor, Kathleen Refkin. And then on the end, we have our city engineer with WSB is Kathleen, I was gonna say. Another Kathleen. Alice Infowski. And then we have our director of administration, Ally Palfus. Our public works superintendent, soon to be our public works depart. What do you call?
Director.
Director, director, Gary Peters. And then we have our city clerk, Don Matzko. And to my right, we have our city administrator, Jasper Krugel. Then we have Brian Grimm, finance director. David Abel is our community development director. And Sarah Sensala is with Kennedy and Graven, our attorney, our city attorney. And then on the end, we have our chief of police, Paul Falls. So with that, are there any changes to the agenda? Do we need to make any? Okay, I don't think we need to. So with that, is there a motion? Oh, this is, yeah. Yeah, okay. Any other, if not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Kathleen. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumpelin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. We don't have any, yeah, we don't have any special presentations tonight. And the people that were signed up were actually here during the work session. And they're not here now, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Are there any consent agenda items you wish to remove? All right?
No, could I make one comment on one?
Sure.
I just wanna call up the donation of volunteer time from River Valley Church. That's incredible, these kids. It is the youth organization.
Oh, okay.
Do this, and it really helps the city a lot. So I just wanted to call them out and thank them for what they do for the city.
Good, good call. Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Okay, with that, we have consent agenda items. A, approve our work session meeting minutes from May 16th, 2022. Approve our city council regular meeting minutes from May 16th, 22. Approve our town hall meeting minutes from May 3rd, 2022. A resolution to approve our claims. E is a resolution to approve a proposal for professional services for a 10-year street capital improvement plan. F is a resolution to approve a change order number for Test Wells 10 and 11 South Water System. This is city project number 05-22. G is a resolution to approve a conditional use permit for David and Myl- Milria?
Milri.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Milri at 4405 Trillium Lane West. H is a resolution to appoint election judges for the absentee ballot board for the August 9th primary, 2022 primary election. And I is a resolution to approve our water infrastructure engineering request for proposal process. And J is approve the donation of volunteer time from the River Valley Church. Thank you. And K is approve license agreement with Mid-Continent Communications for material storage yard site. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through K?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. We'll move on. We have no public hearings, so we'll move on to our business items. First business item is city of Minnetrista's non-union pay plan policy effective June 1st, retroactive. Is that Mr. Krugel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of city council. The next three resolutions you'll see on here are related to the work session agenda item we just had. The first one is to approve that pay plan. So that's the table, the actual table that you saw that was included in the packet. The next resolution, Resolution 90-22, is to approve the actual placement of each individual employee. And then the third one, 91-22, is to approve the promotion of Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters to the director of Public Works effective June 1st. So they're kind of all packaged together. We've talked about them at the work session. If there's any further questions, or if there's anything that you'd like us to talk about, myself and Ally are here to answer any questions. But those items were discussed at the work session.
Council comments, questions? I know we had a lengthy, a nice discussion at the work session. Can you just maybe highlight a couple things just for the audience that might be watching? I know you said the grades were compressed from 22. Can you just explain a couple things?
Yep, yeah, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. On the proposed pay plan that we're proposing from the staff perspective and from David Drown and Associates, the consultant, we're gonna move from 22 grades to 12. So kind of compressing that, not kind of, compressing that pay plan quite a bit. And really what that does is it spreads the points that each grade are assigned out a little bit more. So there were a lot of grades that weren't being used in our current plan, the 22. I think grades 1 through 5 weren't being used. So we're more effectively using the entire pay plan. So that's one major change. One thing that came from the market analysis was that we were on average 13% below market. So what this pay plan does is it gets us up to market. We did look at regional competitors as well, didn't include that in the data analysis, but it's included in the packet. As far as, you know, where an employee might go, I'll call it kind of a risk that we have of people moving. So that's out there. One thing you will receive, and that we will file away, is a report from David Drown and Associates kind of compiling all this information. So that'll be something that we have for future staff to look at, future city council to look at if that's ever needed. You know, as an exercise, we went through this fairly quickly. There was some series of events that made us expedite this evaluation. And I think, you know, city council did a really nice job of kind of moving on their feet to get this done in a timely manner. And I know that the staff really appreciates it, so.
Yeah, and I wanna pay you back and just say thank you. I think I speak for all staff and myself when I say we appreciate the support of the council and by taking this necessary step, undergoing the study, thoroughly looking through the data and taking these actions, I think it really, you know, shows that you value staff. And it's important to us too, so thank you.
Thank you.
The last real piece is the implementation of the pay plan. What does that look like in 2023? What was decided or directed at the work session was to throw in what's included in the packet as option number two. What that is, is a city council determined cost of living adjustment would be applied to the employees' pay on January 1st. And then if there is a step available, they would be able to move along in that step on July 1st of each year. So that's the implementation plan, and that's the pay plan policy. And that structure would be approved with the second resolution.
Thank you. We all talked about it earlier. I just wanted to kind of a quick recap for the audience here, for the public. So thank you very much.
I thought of a question. What job would be a grade 12?
Jasper's.
All right, good question. Yeah, yeah, okay. That's the only one we have. So do I have then a resolution to approve the city of Minnetrista's non-union pay plan policy effective June 1st with option number two, as we discussed, right? As we discussed at the work session?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chumpelin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next, we have approve the placement of city of Minnetrista's non-union employees into the pay plan structure. Thank you. And that's what Mr. Jasper had also indicated and explained. Any other questions? But that, who is number 12, or who would fall into step number 12? That would, good, yeah, grade 12. All right, anything else? Okay, is there a motion to approve resolution number, item 6B?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. And then approve our promotion of our public works superintendent, Gary Peters. Ally or Jasper, you want to make any comments?
Sure, I can do this one.
Okay.
I mean, I think we all know Gary's great at his job. And he's been here for nearly 10 years with the growth of the department, the additional staff, his level of decision-making, the impact of those decisions on the organization. I think we can all agree, he deserves this promotion to the director. So he'll be moving to grade 10, step 4, at 5358.
And he'll be doing, he basically now does
Correct.
the job of a director. It's more than just a supervisor.
The title is now reflecting the duties he's been doing for a while.
Right, yeah, thank you. Great job, Gary. All right. Any other questions or comments? So is there then a motion to approve the promotion of our public works superintendent, Gary Peters, to director of Public Works effective June 1st, 22?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chumpelin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll move on to approve a conditional offer of employment for Adam Hagelholtz as public works maintenance worker. The name is very familiar.
Yes.
I wonder why?
I will.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council has been asked to approve a conditional offer for Adam Hagelholtz as a public works maintenance worker, which is the additional public works position approved for mid-year hire. Advertising for this position was posted for a month, and in total, there were three applications received, interviews were conducted, and Mr. Adam Hagelholtz emerges as the final candidate. And the personnel committee provided direction to me to continue with the conditional offer. A little more about Adam. He worked with the city of Minnetrista as a public works maintenance worker from 2014 to 17. He loved to pursue a career in a different field and obtained his bachelor's degree in business admin and worked with South Metro Transit in customer service and HR for about four years. And then most recently, he is currently at the city of Plymouth for a little over a year in their public works streets department. So due to his experience not only in other communities, but here in Minnetrista, we recommend starting him at step 4 of the local 49 union pay program at $29.44 per hour. And I can answer any questions you have?
Thank you.
We expect him to start after the 4th of July, shortly after the 4th.
Okay. Here'll be a good addition. We need, we need more workers. I know Gary is, could need, need, use some help. So, all right, any other questions, comments? So do I have a motion then to make a conditional offer of employment to Adam Hagelholtz for Public Works?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And then we have a professional services agreement with WSB for our 2023 street improvement projects. This is gonna be a little tricky because we talked, we talked at length about all of the streets. Do we want to give a little overview?
Certainly, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'll give a Cliff Notes version of what transpired at the work session. So on page, let's see, where are we at even in the packet? We're in 101, thank you. Page 101 of the packet, an introduction. So at the last city council meeting, the city council had a good discussion about upcoming projects. And with interest rates going up, council gave direction to come back to take a look at doing a bonding project in 2023, for 2023 instead of 2024. So staff went to work after receiving that direction and came up looking at the 2024 projects, rolling that into 2023. And then peppered in a few other street for consideration for council, just as we had some discussion and, you know, wanted to bring council's attention to some other areas that they may want to consider. So during the work session this evening, the council had some deliberation in as far as how much they wanted to bond, knowing that, and staff knew full well that when we put the package together, $16 million in projects was not a feasible amount. But went, again, wanted to give council some good information to work off of for direction for 2023 projects. And so the guidance provided is to look at between 8.3 and 8.4 million dollars in bonding. And after, and gave direction to proceed with the following project areas. And we're looking, project area A, which is the reconstruction of Eastview, Morningview, and Westwood. And then project area C1, which is the reclamation of the North Arm, North Arm Road. And then also some full-depth removal of Timber Trail. And there's also another Mill and Overlay Street there on the south side. And then as well as proceeding with project area C3, which is the Mill and Overlay of Painters Creek Preserve. And also the Mill and Overlay of Sunny Brook, which is originally part of project area C4, but we would just do Sunny Brook Circle of the other two roads. And then also project area D, which is the Mill and Overlay of Turtle Creek with a little bit of full-depth removal. And then also some direction to get some, pull some costs together on what it would cost to do a Mill and Overlay of Hunter's Trail, which is a stated route from Highway 7 to the park to extend the life of that road before going in with a more intensive project. As well as proceeding with the Mill and Overlay of some of the local streets off Hunter's Trail within that north area, so that area between Highway 7 and the park. So with that, when we look at what the proposal has been, how it was set up, we understood that we wouldn't be getting authorization for all of this work. So when we look at making a recommendation this evening, we would be looking at authorization for project areas A, C1, C3, and D. And then we can bring back another letter proposal for those other streets since we want to make sure that we're parsing out the right information and not putting, you know, the fees that are in here would be too high for the work that the council directed, so.
And then the other ones that you're gonna be bringing back, those are primarily Mill and overlays.
Correct.
So the work involved, see, I'm, we're concerned about timing up this. So we want to make sure that, that we still get these projects designed and out for bid on time, so.
Yes, and the, thank you, Madam Mayor. And another thing that just I had wanted to make mention to is that council did want to look at prioritizing Mill and Overlay roads to extend the life before the roads deteriorated to a condition where there would be full-depth removal or reclamation projects.
And we're also gonna be looking at a overlay or Mill and Overlay for the end of King's Point Road to trying to extend the life of that one too.
Thank you. I didn't have that on this list, so thank you. That is another area that we would bring back.
Okay. So in your proposal, or in the packet, you need a motion to approve professional services agreement for areas A, area C1, area D, and then you'll be bringing back the rest? Is that correct?
I believe we had C3 in there as well.
C3?
Correct.
Okay.
Painters Creek Preserve.
Okay. Thank you. So A, C1, D, and C3.
Correct.
All right. Yeah, we had a lengthy discussion. We understand the implications of bonding for this amount, but if we put it off, we kind of, we felt that it's just gonna cost us more and more and more. So I think great, great ideas, and I think this is really a good, everybody's ideas coming in, and we ended up with a good product, I think, a good, good end result, so good outcome. With that, is there a motion to approve A, C1, D, and C3 for professional services?
Understood.
Okay. Ms. McGregor made that motion, and Ms. Refkin seconded that. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we can now move on to administrative items, staff reports, updates.
Yes, I'll be very brief tonight. I just have a couple little updates here. This'll be the last update I give on the Crime Prevention Fund golf event because that is on Monday, the 13th, so that is occurring. We will be having a strategic planning session here at city council on June 20th. I think that starts at 3:00. So 3:00 PM. I did send a short survey out to council members to get some feedback on that. If I, if I could get that by Friday, that'd be excellent, and then we can kind of get some materials going. So that should be in your email, it's sent out this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then the League of Minnesota Cities Conference is June 22nd. I know myself and Mayor Whalen will be there in attendance. And then National Night Out is August 2nd. And if you'd like to get on the list with the police department, please just give our police department a call, and they'll get you on the list. So that's all I have.
Both if council would like to join an officer to go to some of the parties, but also if there's people out there that would like to host a party and would like the police to show up. So contact the police. Thank you for doing that, too. I know it's a lot of work, but it's a very good event, so thank you, Paul. All right. So is there any water tower, are we, I just want to ask Gary, since we've kind of, if you will, implemented the uneven watering restrictions, and we've tried to do some education and so on, has that been working? How are we doing? I know it's been cooler and wetter than last year, but how are we doing water tower levels and so on?
That's how, the cool and wet weather's really helped. I mean, our tower levels have been very steady, especially with the new tower online. We've not seen a big, any big drastic drops in it, so yeah, it's not gonna keep the weather up.
And then I saw an email from Miles Jensen, SCH, saying that the water treatment plant is operating at 100, 1,050, 50 gallons a minute, so that's
We just, Mike and I actually talked about that today, and did some testing here today too. We got 1,075 gallons per minute. We're looking at 25 hours between our backwash, which is awesome.
That's excellent.
And that allows now for the reuse of that backwash water. Where it has time now to settle out. So we are skimming off the top of that and getting it taken care, you know, and using that to feed back into the systems. We're not wasting that water, so.
Okay, good.
We will, we can do some calculations. It's compared to what we were, it is monitored what we're sending out to waste, so we'll have a good calculation here in a couple months to see what the actual savings is gonna be, but it'll be tremendous.
Oh, good, good, excellent.
So water we can resell, which is great.
And appreciate SCH's involvement and participation. I know that they've been doing a lot of work with you. That's great. Just one other question with the test wells. I know we had to extend that. Any idea? I know it was because of all the rain and they got stuck and you had to get them on
We went in on Friday, and you
Certainly, if you like. So they, they did mobilize to the site. They were able to get a better access than going along the trail. But because the soils that were there were never corrected, and we knew that, but we were anticipating coming in off that trail, but they, they went off the trail area where the sewer is and got their equipment stuck. Unfortunately, contractor there was able to help out. Public Works stepped in and stabilized the area with some rock. We got permission from the property owner before doing so. And so I don't know that they've started drilling yet, but certainly time is money for them to have their equipment out, so we expect them to get going on this very quickly.
So their equipment is still there?
The drill rig is there. It's set in place. They got it in there. They were getting water yet as of this afternoon. They're bringing water over to get ready to go. They want to start drilling, I believe, tomorrow.
Great, okay.
So they're ready to go, so.
Good.
I just wanna, you know, give kudos to Geisner for allowing us to use, they're the main contractor for the Med Council's all 24 project. They allowed us to use their road to come in, their service road to come in, the backway, so, which made it very easy for them to get their drill rig in there. So we have a good working relationship with the Med Council with this, with their projects and with Geisner. So it was very nice of them to let us use that, and it was very kudos to them to bring over their doors or to help pull their rig out, because it is quite the big rig. So it was very good, so.
Well, good, just cooperation, collaboration.
If you just want an update on the tower, the new tower?
Yep.
They're moving along. All the black dirt and seeding is done inside the fence area, is all done, matted, ready to go. The outside, they ran out of dirt. They're looking to finish that this week. Everything will be seeded, ready to go. And then I have not heard an update, though. We do have a small drip coming from the upper area. It's something to do with that gasket again, but they think they can solve that pretty easily, so just a matter of getting Phoenix in here to get that taken care of.
Sure hope they don't have to drain the tower.
Nope, they, they've assured me they will not have to, so.
Okay, that would not be good, okay. All right, good. And then, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do need liaison for the planning commission.
Okay.
We did receive an application for a concept plan review for a future grocery store down in Woodland Cove, which will be on this, this meeting, and then it would come to this council on July 18th, so I can need a liaison.
Kathleen, are you interested in going?
I emailed Jasper, I said I'm
Okay, so, good. I thought you would be. I said I would go, but I said, let's see if Kathleen wants to be there, so. That's exciting. I think it's exciting news that they're, they've been thinking about this, and it's been in the works for a long time, so we're excited to see them come forward. So hopefully it'll all work out. So great, thank you. And thank you, Kathleen. So anything else? No park commission meetings or anything like that? Okay. Staff, council reports?
I, I will first. I went to the St. Bonnie Fire Meeting two weeks ago. Yeah, okay. There have been 91 calls to date in 2022 with 48 in for Minnetrista. The duty officer program is going great. The guys all like it.
Good.
They've had 28 calls, and so far, where the duty officer went, for those, only the duty officer needed to go. The hours are the same as Mounds, Monday through Thursday, at 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM each day, and then Friday, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and then Saturday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM through Sunday. So 12 hours, 24-hour shifts there. So it's three guys who rotate for the week, and then there's 11 guys rotating those three shifts. They'll review the meeting at their July meeting, sorry, they'll review the duty program at their July meeting with the officers just to make sure everything's going okay. They're working with training with Mound, so that's going well. Med calls are the highest, same as Mounds. The budget's on track for 2022. The SPMA budget for 2023 is $418,095. Chief is recommending a raise for the men. They currently get 1117 per hour, and he wants to up it to 1260, which is a 15% increase. He's got guys complaining they can go work at Subway for more, so.
Right.
And their structure's a lot different than Mounds. Mounds pays less, but their pension payout is higher. They pay more per hour, and their pension payment is less. So if we do do the fire district, that is going to be a big point of contention, because Mound gets 960 an hour. So it's substantially different. He's also recommending an increase for the chief pay from 3,000 up to 4,000. And the lieutenant, I believe, also an increase to 1,500. The fuel budget for 2023 is being doubled. He's not even sure that will be enough because they're already, this year's budget's already blown, so. They ordered the new engine. That happened faster than expected. The pricing for it that they got is 716,000, which is the prepayment option, which included a trade-in for their current truck. And that price is locked in, even though the truck won't be traded in for two years, likely because it'll take 22 to 24 months to get the new truck. They can sell the truck themselves and then just adjust the payment with what they sell it for.[1719.12] They weren't sure about that because the market for them isn't that great and the trade-in value is good for what they're offering. They did it as quickly as they did it because they would have waited till after April 29th. It would have gone up to $838,000. So they had the money in the budget and they bought it. So in two years, they'll get a new engine 11. Due to getting the new truck, the concrete replacement in the front of the station is being delayed until next year. And events for 2022, they will be going to National Night Out. They'll have the October Fire Prevention Week with school and fire tours. They'll do breakfast with Santa on December 17th. And they are participating in the South Pole Tour, August 5th through the 7th. And the next meeting will be on November 17th. Any questions?
They're always so thorough. We never have any questions. Thank you. Thank you.
And then I am attending the Mound Fire Meeting on the 9th, which will be from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning.
All right, thank you.
Okay. The Gillespie Center's having another board meeting on Thursday at 5:00 and that's the last one until September. The big thing with the Gillespie Center is their fundraiser that's coming up on June 18th, 4:00 to 8:00 PM. And that's called Rockin' the Block. And it sounds like a ton of fun. There's going to be food, there's going to be silent auction, there's going to be a huge band. It really will be Rockin' the Block.
Yeah.
So everyone should.
Is it going to be outside?
Yes, it's outside.
Nice.
And Ally, did you get any kind of a poster or anything from them? Okay, I'll send it to you soon.
I was just going to type "new" and I'll send that.
Okay, and then I attended the West Taka Community Commercial Meeting. And Vicky Schlooning, and I'll give you all this data. Vicky Schlooning represented the Lake Minnetoka Conservation District. And this is an agency that represents all stakeholders for property and boats. They love talking to new residents and new boat owners so that they can get the rules and regulations across to them. And there are two patrols during the busiest times on the lake. You can check out water levels on the website all summer long. And they pretty much do overviews on the environment, safety and nuisances. And so I'll give you the telephone number and the website.
Thank you. And we are a member of LMCD as is, there's 14 cities surrounding the lake and each city has a representative on their board. And we have Mike Kirkwood. He's very good, very good. So, yeah, good. Thank you.
Attended, May 19th, attended Pioneer Sarah Creek Meeting. Brian from Three River Park sat at that meeting, said that the feasibility study to treat South Whale Tail had been completed. It was waiting for signatures that would be forwarded on to state. So hopefully at our next meeting, which I'll attend, which will be June 16th, I don't know how quickly Bowser responds to those, but hopefully we'll know something in June, at the latest in July, so that they can give their grant requests then, so that we can see what numbers fall out for us for our potential budgeting, which will start in August, I assume, so.
Right. And that can come out of our stormwater fund, if, you know, if we.
Again, the original projection was rough numbers at the time was with the contingency built in was now $330,000. Commission would cover 25% and other grants trickle down to what we have to pay.
Well, and Three Rivers will participate too.
Right, correct.
Yeah, so, okay, good. Keep us posted.
That's it. Let's see. I attended the Planning Committee Meeting on the 23rd, which was under the consent agenda issue tonight, and the Personnel Committee on 6/24.
And Trista Day, I think.
Trista Day, yes. And it was very fun.
Right.
Highly attended.
Right. It was, I attended Trista Day too. It was a great day. No rain and no, not very windy at all. And I think it was one of the best-attended Trista Days that we've had. Yeah, so we almost, almost ran out of hot dogs, didn't we?
We did, basically.
And Gary and his crew did a good job on cooking them. So thank you and thank you and your team for putting this together. It really is a great community event. Also attended the Personnel Committee Meeting and I will be attending the League Conference. I have some other meetings that I'll report back on. That's it. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. We are adjourned.